They've got two names on their document.
So we'll read it out while we get to that.
And this was the original name, CTC.
The thing that Sarah's good on fiber optic systems.
What does that mean?
Does that mean that?
What's the new motion?
Okay. Was there a problem?
Yeah, I guess.
Sarah, when we get to the CTC, will you be willing to sit and talk with the board about what it exactly means? You and Marcy? Okay. So anything?
Yeah.
She'll talk about why the verbiage changed and all that.
Okay.
She just got it right before we, before Sue and I met this evening itself, yeah.
And I don't really understand. I think, is Sarah gonna come up and talk about the CTC?
Yes. She and Marcy both, so.
Okay.
I have six o'clock. Okay, we're gonna call this meeting to order at six o'clock, June 10th, and this is a regular school board meeting.
Okay, you got it.
Janet, could you do roll call?
Charles Blacklands.
Here.
Reed Campbell.
Here.
Tom Haglund.
Sue Turner.
Here.
Ruth Nelson.
Here.
Bob Nystrom.
Here.
All present.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic in which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that. Now, we're gonna, I will be needing a motion to approve the agenda, but before doing that, there are some changes. So it's an amended agenda. There's some additions to the district recognitions. And then probably the main thing here is on number eight. It should read, motion to authorize the superintendent and board chair to take all steps necessary to finalize and execute the Second Amendment to the fiber optic system agreement, provided the following conditions are met. The district's administration must work with legal counsel and CSI to revise the Second Amendment. Number one, to include a specific deadline for when CSI will release the fibers described in the Second Amendment and to the district. And number two, to include a statement indicating CSI has authority to release the fibers to the district and will take no action in future impairing its ability to release the fibers to the district. And I think that's pretty much it.
That's pretty much it.
Yeah.
Board Chair, Curran, at this time, could we also change the consent calendar to after the action items?
Yes, let's do that.
Sure.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the amended agenda?
So move.
Second.
We have a first from Director Blacklands and a second from Director Campbell. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign, motion carries unanimously. District recognitions, we got this wonderful little thank you note here from Kelsey Miller. We gave her a scholarship and she's going to become an elementary education teacher. So, it's so cute, and I'm gonna pass this around for everybody.
All right, then we have lots of exciting things that have been happening in the district. We think the school year is over, but we've had lots of state tournaments and so there's fun results to share. I want to begin tonight by congratulating Howie Jacobs, who is retiring as the girls' track coach and was named the Section Eight AA Coach of the Year. Thank you also to Bruce Thompson, who is retiring as the boys' tennis coach. I know I went to Howie Jacobs' retirement party and he was talking about how he really wanted to end on a high note, and so how exciting for him to be able to do that and to get this honor, so congratulations. The second one, congratulations to the girls' golf team of Ellie Bymark, Alexis Mengine, Katie Foley, Abby Polkamp, Anna Krieger, Izzy Olson, for Section Eight AA Champions, the first time since 1999, and for qualifying for the state tournament, which will be held on June 11th and 12th, 2019, at Bunker Hills Golf Course. Congratulations also to Patrick Morrigan, to Ian Oddland, and to Garrett Gaden for qualifying for the boys' tennis state tournament being held June 4th through the 7th, 2019, at the U of M Baseline Center. Congratulations also to the girls' track team qualifiers and section winners. The state tournament was June 7th and 8th at Hamlin University. Brenna Deason in the 100-yard dash got third at sections. Gabby Smith, Kayla Deason, Maya Nelson, and Brenna Deason in the four-by-100 relay took first at sections. Gabby Smith, Ellis Selisker, Kayla Deason, and Brenna Deason in the four-by-200 relay took first at sections. Gabby Smith took second at sections in the long jump. Emma Smith took second in the triple jump, and at the state tournament, she took sixth place. Eden Warden also took second in the pole vault. Congratulations also to the boys' track state qualifiers and section winners. The state tournament was also held on June 7th and 8th at Hamlin University. Ethan Hebert in the pole vault, he took first at section. Zach Henke took second in the 110 hurdles and first in the sections for the 300 hurdles, and he finished third at the state tournament. Zach Henke, Ethan Hebert, Ben Renner, and Hunter Turcot participated in the four-by-400 relay. They took first at sections and sixth at the state tournament. So congratulations to all our athletes on a job very well done.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you.
The next thing up is public input. Is there anybody who wanted to come before the board and talk about a topic tonight? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead with our building project update. We're gonna start with the high school. Scott and Mike, Justin and Val will do early childhood. Brandon will talk about the construction process. And Brandon will talk about this.
Okay, good evening, everybody. So Chris wasn't able to make it tonight, so I will take you through the building standards and give you the project update, as well as Scott will lead into the Brainerd High School construction document approval, along with Mike England from WSN. And then Justin and Val will come up and take you through the Baxter Early Childhood Schematic Design Approval. And then Justin will finish out with some construction expectations, safety procedures, et cetera, on what the projects are gonna be looking like moving forward over the summer. So I'll start with the building update. I'll wing through the four that we have going right now. Forest View was originally scheduled to start last week, but due to the large volume of traffic in there with staff and everything happening, we pushed it back to start today. Too much work going on the front entrance, so we just waited and started today. We'll still be fine for the start of school in the fall, so don't see any issues with that. Out at Nisswa, they already have some concrete poured in the ground for some footings and et cetera, so making some good progress out there. Currently on schedule. I reviewed some egress, emergency egress plans with the building official today for the library. So everything should be taken care of for that for the summer, and we got buy-in from the building official on that as well. Out at New Baxter Elementary, they're currently working on site clearing, building layout. They're gonna be working on excavating for foundations, should be looking at seeing some concrete starting to go in the ground here shortly. That contract will be showing up late this week, early next week. They're already starting to mobilize out there. So if anybody hasn't been out there since the groundbreaking, it's been quite a bit of progress. It looks quite different out there. They already have the holding pond roughed in, just looks completely different. So if anybody hasn't been out there, encourage you to take a look out there, it's pretty cool. Out at Harrison, they had some soil corrections that were taking place over the last week. Those are done. They've excavated the unsuitable material, have backfilled it with a good material. It's been tested and compacted and passed. So kind of the same stage as Nisswa and New Baxter Elementary, working on, gonna be working on excavating for some foundations, pouring some concrete out there. And then currently working on some odds and ends, building demolition at some of the new connections area where the new building ties into the existing. Garfield, Lowell, and Riverside have entered into design development stages. There's already been some user group meetings that have been held. They'll continue with that until the design team has gleaned all the appropriate information. And we'll be starting to pick up on some of the interior design work as well now, moving into DD. Should be a little more streamlined from before, work with some smaller groups, individual groups at the building, since a lot of those issues have been resolved already with the standards and also with the Wave One project, so it should be a little bit more efficient moving through Wave Two as well. So starting with the standards, we'll kind of lay out the framework, starting with the branding, the planning criteria, and we'll roll through the design phases and the document standards, as well as touch on the specification manuals and typical design details. So this one's just a presentation. We have the full standards document that we've ended up modifying. Instead of creating two different sets of standards for the high school and the elementaries, Chris has taken and combined them as one. So all, actually, this is the previous presentation from the elementary standards, so we've highlighted everything in blue at least. I don't want to read through all this stuff, there's quite a bit in here, we've already presented it before, but I'll definitely touch on the items that have been adjusted for the high school. So first slide, we just, documents start out discussing the history and why we're establishing the standards. And the reason is to provide the consistency throughout the district's facilities, just to try to create the common baseline moving forward to help guide the design team. And again, we can make changes. Depending on the building, each project's a little unique, so even though we strive to have everything the same, there's inherent differences between the projects, so any of these changes that are different will be brought up in front of the core group at each building and then ultimately the project oversight team as well. So this one is a change for the high school. That just states again a little bit more in detail about that the district administration can alter, add to, or subtract from the standards as needed to align with the district's mission and curriculum delivery in order to accommodate the learning environments for 21st century learning. Branding, everything has relatively remained the same, with the exception of we might be looking a little bit of additional signage at the high school due to a couple of different entrances. One on the south side for the athletics, and then we have the main entrance on the east side. So you probably see some, maybe some additional signage happening at the high school. And again, just a visual from some of the previous presentation, you see the big tall B in blue there, and with the front entry made a little bit more prominent to help identify that as the front entry. Site standards really haven't changed, but just want to point out that, again, striving to make sure the bus traffic is separated from the parent drop-off and pickup and moved away from the primary traffic routes, which we've been able to accomplish at the high school. But as always, are kind of governed by local ordinance and government entities to meet their requirements as well through the conditional use process. So at the high school, we have a little bit different because the elementaries have learning commons, kind of some shared spaces outside of the grade ranges, and the high school just a little bit different that we don't have that, but we have what I would consider just more common spaces. And it will be able to have the capability of being locked down internally with some multiple lockdown points within the high school. And also 1,100 lockers are going to be provided. They'll be 12 inches wide, 15 inches deep, and they'll be double stacked, so they'll be three feet high, one on the bottom, one on the top. They'll have slope tops, so students can't stack stuff up there and kind of let it be a junk collector. So if they try that, they'll just slide right off and hit the floor. Classrooms at the middle school and the high school generally remain in their current configurations, but it's important to note that there may be future improvements here and there potentially be some opportunity for some learning commons configuration at the high school as well. Part of the Performing Arts Center was identified that it should be a prominent building element that's highly visible. We believe we've accomplished that. It's to have a minimum capacity of 1,200 seats. There's an orchestra pit in the front of the stage. The lobby is to be large enough to accommodate a full venue that has been reworked and been expanded to make sure we can support everybody that needs to be in that building. And the PAC is also adjacent to the music suite at the high school, so on the west side is the music suite and the east side is the Performing Arts Center. And again, there's adjacent support spaces, changing rooms, scene shop, et cetera.
Brandon, it has a minimum capacity of 1,200. What, is it gonna have a max?
I don't think we addressed the max. I think we're exactly at 1,200 actually, yes.
I think we are exactly at 1,200 right now because we put in a variety of sizes of seats. Mike is shaking his head. So what we did is we aimed for that 1,200 number and we're able to make it fit into that. So it's exactly what we had sold to the public when we talked to them, so.
If I just take minimum out of there, have a capacity of 1,200 seats.
Yes, it has exactly 1,200. Really no changes here, just talks about special ed can be either organized in suite configurations or kind of scattered throughout the building to accommodate any of those needs. And then again, that each building shall have a media center, and there'll be enough space to accommodate classes to be in that space as well. Additional for the high school identifies some of the CTE spaces as being woodshop, metal shop, small engines, egg classroom, the greenhouse, fax labs, the CAD lab, robotics lab, business lab, staff workroom. And then the pool has spectator seating for 500 seats, which is raised and separate from the pool deck. Also has dedicated locker rooms with 15 inches wide by 15 inches deep lockers, 36 inch high again stacked, nice solid welded lockers on concrete curbs, raised up on concrete to keep the lockers off the ground, to keep away from the rusting or anything like that with chlorine water from the pool.
Quick question, what are the, what's the capacity for the seating at the high school swimming pool now, bleachers?
I don't.
Earl, do you have, know what those are?
Yeah, we're about 400, 500, something like that.
No, 200 maybe? 230 maybe? Yeah.
Okay, so this will be significantly larger than, great, thank you.
Yes.
Yeah, there's a few more than that, I think.
Great, thank you.
Okay, we'll also have office for the FIAED and the coaching to monitor the pool, dedicated pool storage, shower facilities will have individual shower, private shower stalls, separate pool and a separate diving well, so they're not one, they're individual, with their dedicated basins. Zero depth entry in addition to the ladders going into the pool, and then deck space for athletes and teams to watch and wait for their events. Spectator seating for 500 seats raised and separate from the pool deck, the 15 inch wide by 36 inch lockers on concrete curbs as well. Really no change, sorry.
To the pool, all the present equipment is transferable to the new pool system, right?
Is there anything being renewed?
Yes.
Yeah.
It's being reused, with the exception of the diving.
As much as possible.
Perfect.
Music, so the classrooms and spaces have been organized into a suite configuration, and so then that results in a variety of ensemble and practice rooms, and also shall have dedicated instrument storage as well. This talks about storage, which is common throughout all the facilities, for custodial staff, sound reinforcement system, et cetera. Secure entrance, we should probably touch on this a little bit again. Generally, same concept as the elementary, as the elementaries, where we walk into a vestibule and they're either held or able to walk into the office area where they are not allowed to enter the building until the person sitting at the desk for the school determines that they're okay to walk into the building, and then they will, you know, allow them to proceed into the building. Few changes for the high school that we've added in here. During after-school and evening activities, the entrances associated with that event will be the main or the additional entrance, which is the south side for the pool area for use by the public and the visitors. And again, a secondary point of lockdown will provide the opportunity to manually lock those doors, such as the classrooms, when an event is occurring after school hours, so it can kind of start to limit people from wandering within the building. Exterior doors will be locked all summer long at the high school, except during scheduled events. And we kind of laid out how that process works, that the time period requiring the entrance doors to be unlocked, it'll be the responsibility of the event organizer to communicate and coordinate that with the appropriate individual within the district. So depending on the event, they just reach out to the district, maybe even an internal person within the district, or reach out to custodial or the building engineer, whoever's in charge of that building for programming, they'll reach out to them and coordinate those times for locking and unlocking of the building.
And who's responsible to make sure there's no one left in the building at the end of an event?
It's a good question. I don't know if there's current procedure or not within the district or how that.
People always do a final check, right? The buildings, Earl?
And I think that's something that's gonna have to be addressed as a part of this, or lack of procedure.
Good question.
And so I feel like that'll probably be different at each building a little bit. Probably something we should work through at each individual building and try to find a commonality maybe, and then bring that back to oversight and discuss that, make sure everybody's comfortable with that plan. Again, just a visual on how the secure entrance works. So essentially, the doors on the right that are, I don't know, I'll call that purple, I guess, light blue, I don't know, those are controllable but will remain unlocked during the day and will allow people to walk into the building, where the secondary set of doors will remain locked, so nobody can pass through that point. They'll go into the office where they run through the procedure, and then that person will buzz them out and into the building. Yellow identifies card readers for either students, staff, whoever may be issued a card, so they can walk into those doors without having to be admitted, and they swipe their card, just like we do on the other buildings, and they're able to access those spaces.
Brandon, I do see a missing red dot down on the SRO officer's room. We were going to allow the SRO officer to be able to shut down the building as well. I know that's on our plans, but we need to make sure that it's here in here as well.
So if the panic button is pushed, that goes to the Brainerd Police Department?
I don't know the procedure for that yet, if it's a call-out system or how that works, but it would essentially send the building into lockdown, trigger the lockdown, any automatic doors would close, and that'll enter your lockdown procedure. So whatever your current procedure is for that, we would just maintain that. So if you currently call out to the police department, we would keep that in effect.
So would bells ring inside the school if the panic button was set?
That will remain the same again. I know we have added lights for visual as well, blue lights flashing, I don't know if they're blue, but lights on the exterior, lights on the interior to also aid in a visual. And then the red dots Lain are talking about are the panic buttons. We see we have them in the principal's office, we have them at the reception area, and then we'll add one into the SRO, so everybody will have that option to be able to send it into lockdown if needed. We'll get into the building finishes, probably a little hard to see, but generally, this is touching on floor finishes, lower level combination of ceramic tile, walk-off carpet, et cetera. Bulk of it's happening on the main floor. VCT is, I don't know, is that red? I'll call it red. The red areas are VCT, the blue, there's a kind of that light blue center in the learning commons of the classrooms is existing terrazzo, and then all the darker blue is new terrazzo that's being installed. And then carpet is the tan color, which is in the bulk of the classrooms. Same thing on upper level, combination of VCT and carpet. And also shows the upper level of the Performing Arts Center, which is carpet as well, with the exception of the upper level restrooms, which are ceramic tile. Again, this just defines the phases of the design, schematic design, design development, and tonight we're asking for approval for the construction documents for the high school. And then the specifications are organized around the Construction, Specification, Institute Number System. And here's an example of that, I don't want to, need to read through that, but Division Zero through Division Thirty-Three identifies, I don't want to call them trade, I guess they're trades, the demolition pieces, the architectural components, mechanical, electrical, and then site work. And this is consistent, I guess I'll say generally throughout the industry, we use the same numbering system, so everybody's familiar with specifications in the industry. And again, typical design details, we use industry-recognized standard details throughout the projects, and then, you know, kind of individualize them for each building as well as needed. Well, let Mike come up, and he will take you through the high school presentation along with Scott. If you have any questions in the meantime, feel free to reach out.
Thank you, Brandon.
Perfect. Scott Whitmore, ICS Consulting, Mike England, WSN. As Brandon had mentioned, we're here for the construction document approval for the Brainerd High School. The first slide here is the overall site, excuse me, site plan, inclusive of north parking lot, two parking lots east of Fifth Street, Performing Arts Edition, the Aquatic Center, the Auxiliary Gym, and the Commons Area Edition infilling the center courtyard there. This plan hasn't changed really at all. Really, about the last three weeks or so, it was kind of in flux there for a little while, but I feel like we got nailed down pretty well now. As mentioned, oversight, conditional use permit was approved last Monday night, so we got the green light there. The only thing we have to do still is work on the landscape plan with the city staff. So that will develop a little bit, but I think we're all heading in the right direction there.
What was the end result of the light poles?
Twenty-three feet. The plan, as indicated on the CUP application, at 23-foot heights was approved.
Yeah, and it was really exciting because after they approved that it was okay for us to use 23-foot poles, Jan Lambert made a motion to allow the school district, in all of the building that we're going to be doing at the high school, whether it's south campus, if it's the bus drop-off pickup, that we can use 23-feet, poles that are 23-feet high without having to go to the planning commission anymore. And that was approved by the city council on a 5-2 vote. So we were really excited that she brought that forward and so that we know what we can, what kind of planning we can do as we move forward with those pieces as well.
Again, here's north parking lot, after the Performing Arts After the Performing Arts Edition, we'll have one hundred and sixty-four parking spaces with six ADA spaces in that location there, with a DCD drop-off, dedicated drop-off on the lower left-hand side of the parking lot. East of Fifth Street parking lots, the north one will have one hundred and seventy-two parking stalls with six ADA spaces. And the southerly one will be eighty-eight parking spaces with four dedicated ADA. The median there, shown on Fifth Street, will be a combination of trees and hedges as it gets approved by the city staff.
Scott, I'm sorry, the little circular things on each end of the parking lot, are those curved up or are those?
Yep, those are islands. We have to maintain green space requirement per the city ordinance.
Okay.
And that's also where the lighting poles will be stationed as well. On the south side of the site, where we have the aquatics and the auxiliary gym, we'll have our dedicated parent drop-off lanes and the aquatics entrance, which will, which will also serve as the dedicated parent drop-off location. There'll be a sign there with the Brainerd High School logo and the blue element as well.
Can you go back real quick? So is this on the south side of the, of the pool then?
That's correct. That's Quin Street.
So.
It's between the north campus and south campus currently.
And where's the entrance for the, for the pool you had referenced earlier?
It would be right there.
And did you say that during a pool event, that'll be used?
That's correct.
But we're going to have quite a bit of parking in that small lot for people with disabilities, correct?
That's correct.
Because it would be an easier entrance for, for people with handicaps to access the gymnasium and the pool from that parking lot rather than way over on the east side of Fifth Street.
That's correct. Not shown on this plan because it's not part of this work scope is the South Campus improvements. South Campus improvements are going to be primarily parking lots.
The reason why I asked just quickly is, is, so if somebody comes up and they have a wheelchair, are they going to be able to drop off right in front of the entrance?
That's correct.
There, and that won't be in the middle of a flow of traffic?
No, there's bypass lanes.
Okay.
There's also dedicated accessible parking on the lower portion on the west side, so we're re-striping that. And that was based on some of the conversations we've had at oversight and the other school board meeting. And so those parking stalls will be utilized for that for other athletic events on site.
Thank you.
You bet.
Here's kind of just the overall floor plan of the main level. Auxiliary Gym, stripe for basketball, volleyball, pickleball, and badminton. Six stands in there, the pool. Five hundred scene capacity, as discussed earlier, as we move north, the new CTE Commons Area. D Wing will now consist of DCD, cafeteria, large commons area in there as well. A Building will be pretty much a light remodel in, in the entire building. Floors, doors, ceilings, new lockers, eleven hundred lockers are going in primarily A Wing. Sciences will get redone or remodeled on the first and second floor. And we're doing significant ADA upgrades in the A Wing as well. Allowing for ADA-compliant stalls in bathrooms, single-use stalls on the first floor, and ADA accessibility, pretty much all throughout the whole project. Questions? This is Area One and Two, which will be the Performing Arts Center. You have the music suite, which is on the northwest side, which consists of sped math, math, choir, band, orchestra, the music suite, back-of-house services, and then the Performing Arts Center as well. Second level of Area One, which would be the math and sped math as well. Upper level of the Performing Arts Center. Elevators moved. We have the second floor restrooms, balcony access on the north and south side. Other than that, there hasn't been really any changes to this area. Main level floor plan, the kitchen, student commons, and the CTE Wing. The CTE Wing's going to get a significant upgrade, starting in the summer of 2020. DCD Wing will be redone, visual arts will be on the east side of D Wing. Cafeteria will remain in the same place. We'll be upgrading the floors. A lot of the kitchen equipment, increasing throughput through the serving line. And we'll be adding the commons, infilling the center courtyard to create one big sweeping kind of beautiful area. Questions? Lower level D Wing, we're going to be turning that into sped and the Paze Lab. There'll be three sped, correction, DCD classrooms and a Paze Lab in the lower level of the D Wing. Pool and auxiliary on the main level will be seating for five hundred capacity patrons, as mentioned before. And that'll be the main level of the Ox Gym as well. Lower level, this is where we have the eight-lane competition pool. And to answer the question earlier, we are utilizing the eight starting stands from the existing pool. We'll be buying two new starting stands that will go into the diving well, and there'll be two diving platforms which go in there as well. We're reusing the existing timing system, but we're adding two lane markers. The existing system is six lanes. We're adding two more to make it eight and compatible with your new swimming competition swimming pool. We've got our locker rooms down below, our coaches' office, storage, very large pool deck, mechanical rooms, and elevator to access the south side of the pool as well. And if we look on the lower left of the Ox Gym, we've got the lower level wrestling area, and I'll put two forty-by-forty mats in there, and I'll have a dedicated space in North Campus. Here's some exterior images. This shows what the exterior of the building's going to look like. It'll be metal panel construction with accent colors of face brick, which will match the existing buildings. Another shot. Here's the south side aquatics entrance. You see the vertical blue element with the Brainerd High School logo? And the front entrance, as shown earlier.
So on the pool or the diving pool, hoping that we can have Superintendent Larson be the first one up to high school.
Do a triple flip with the double flip. I'm working on it. I'm practicing. I had a question with regard to the Fifth Street. You had mentioned that you're going to have bushes or trees in the center. Is that all decided, that part of it, or?
Yes, now we have to, per the CUP, we have to work through that with the city staff of, for the city of Brainerd. Indication, initial indication is that they would like trees of a small trunk in a high umbrella or a large umbrella, tall, so that way not to impede sight lines moving through there.
Of course. But when we met with the city council, they said you don't need to go back to the planning commission, you don't need to come back to us. Just work with the staff that are hired to make these decisions and we'll trust that they're going to do what's right. So we really felt good when we left the city council meeting last week.
Interior rendering of the Commons Area, just as you come in from the main office. Got multiple opportunities for digital signage and branding. We're carrying a lot of the Brainerd blue colors around. Again, it's just another view, looking at the south wall of that entrance. Digital displays, then you'll move into the fax labs. And this would be the south end of the Commons. Off to the right side of the screen would be the Aquatics Center. You're looking at the business labs, concessions, à la carte, and Warrior Warehouse. And this would be the view from the Commons Area. There'll be a devising wall, firewall, just to the immediate left side of the screen. And this is the interior of the Performing Arts Center. And this is consistent with what we've shown all along. Hasn't been any changes really to this area. Interior of the pool, there will be a big Brainerd Warrior logo on the east wall of the pool interior. And when we come to budget right now, we are tracking seventeen hundred dollars under budget. Kind of ridiculous, but I've gotten a lot of vendor pricing back and it's been pretty consistent. So I feel pretty confident that we're going to bring this in under budget.
Great job. It looks beautiful.
Alternates, so consistent with the rest of the projects, alternate one is a fully adhered roofing system. We're replacing a lot of the roofs throughout this project. They're either getting new roofs or replaced. There's only two that are, I believe, that are deemed sufficient for the next, you know, numerous years to come. So those aren't, aren't, there's two that aren't getting replaced. Everything else is getting replaced. So the alternate would be to, instead of a ballasted system, go to a fully adhered system. Alternate two is going to be the studio stage enhancements, which would be the black blocks enhanced theatrical system. Alternate three is the theater seating approved equal. So last time we talked, this chair on the left here is the marquee chair that was selected. Twelve hundred of them. Because we're sole sourcing it, we have to provide approved equals. So it would be an alternate for an approved equal. If we get into a budget pickle and an approved equal came in at a lesser amount, we could choose that lesser amount. They're an approved equal quality, but the base bid is that chair on the left that we had picked. Alternate four would be a similar situation. Johnson controls his base bid, just the check. Correction, the approved equals. Alternate five, existing locker room locker replacements. We heard from oversight that they're in bad, bad shape. We went down, looked at them. We would agree that they need to be replaced. Should we come in under budget, we can get those replaced for you guys. And alternate six, we tuck pointing because we're building onto the exterior of the existing building. Tuck pointing and a little bit of masonry refreshment will make that whole Fifth Street side and the north edge look really, really nice. So, any questions?
That's great.
Fantastic. That said, moved into the schedule. We're slated to finish eight twenty-nine of 2022. And that would be inclusive of the east parking lots. And what's holding up the east parking lots is the finishing, the starting of South Campus and then the demolition of LEC, because we can't start those parking lots until LEC is gone. So everything else is tracking pretty good. Well, she'd be breaking ground on nine-three, not nine-two. Correction, nine-one is indicated. Yeah, nine-two. Nine-two is indicated as Labor Day, so it'd be nine-three. Afterwards there. All right.
Very good. And the bids, you're planning to go, you're hoping for a bid opening on June twenty?
It'd be July twelfth.
July twelfth, okay.
Yeah, because the Fourth of July.
I saw it in my calendar, okay.
Makes it a little tight.
So at one o'clock or two o'clock, we'll, we'll get that word out, but that's when the bid opening for the high school will be. So that'll be an exciting day to see how those bids come in.
That's correct.
I hope we can stay with a nicer seat in the auditorium.
I hope so too. It actually, I got the vendor pricing back on that and it came in right at what we had budgeted for.
Oh, good.
So, pretty, pretty hopeful.
Yeah.
That's, that'll be the base bid. Well, it is the base bid. That'll be what we just, what we select.
So the start of construction and the start of the first day of school are the same. That'll be fun.
Have a groundbreaking.
Awesome. Be fun.
When do you think the demolition of LEC will happen?
That would happen the summer of 2022.
Okay, so that is the absolute last thing that would happen.
That's correct. And as soon as we demo that, because there's stormwater drainage piping that has to go from that north parking lot to the stormwater retention pond on the south side of that south parking lot. Can't put that in because we'd tear up all the tar if we did any work ahead of time. So we have to wait until we can get all that, you know, underground piping in from, from the north catch basins to the south.
So that means we'll be short of parking for three years.
That's correct.
I know I've heard Principal Rusk has it under control already.
Any other questions? All right, well, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Justin and Val are going to talk about the early childhood in Baxter.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening. As you're aware, we are looking for SD approval for Baxter Early Childhood. We're looking for approval, but we do understand there's going to be a condition on that, on that approval. We have to look at what we're going to do with the cafeteria space. And so we, we're learning, learning a little more about what the needs are and we're trying to identify what route we'll go. So we're hoping to get SD approval as is with the condition to, to keep exploring what we're doing at caf, at the cafeteria. So with that, I'll have Val go through what we've put together so far.
Sure. So one of the major site impacts that you will feel is the demolition of the fourth-grade two-story structure, which is kind of what is hatch, hatched out in the diagonal. The other thing is, is the new main entry for parents will actually be off of this main parking area. So as part of kind of creating a new entry feel, a new canopy, some of the existing canopy that is wood structure and doesn't meet today's fire code would be removed to help apply a new entrance feel. The next slide kind of goes through how the site would work, generally speaking. So the bus, the bussing would still happen along the frontage road. And that would still remain the bus entrance. Through that, however, on the kind of planned north side, you can see with, by demolishing that fourth grade wing, we are enhancing a lot of more parking and also kind of creating a little bit more opportunity for queuing for parents to drop off. A lot of what will happen here, of course, is parents escorting their children and families in and out of the building.
And you'll see in purple, this is an idea what we're going to do for, to, to handle the stormwater. We're dealing with the city of Baxter, a solution here, and we've actually done a test hole to figure out the seasonal saturation rate and if this is going to work or not. So, you know, when we get to the budget, you'll see we have a certain amount of money allotted. We're trying to dial that in and figure out if that's truly accurate or not. We're, we're still in the, we're still at the SD stage with the budget as well, if that makes any sense.
You're not putting a concrete wall in the bus drop-off again, are we, or that?
No, no. That's just, that'd be subgrade pipe, piping, and then there'd be a retention area, yeah.
So when we have all the early childhood classes where the parents stay, do we have enough parking for all those vehicles? Is that, was that planned in here?
So it's a kind of a mix of some of this parking lot and then also the way some of the Kinder Club parking will happen up.
Oh, yeah, that parking where teachers park now.
Right.
That was one of the concerns. I know that was brought up several times.
If that retention pond isn't enough, is there a backup plan or have you thought at all about a drainage under the parking lot?
Yeah, we have. It's not looking likely, but another solution would be to route it on the north side, parallel to the, to the cemetery and actually to the existing catch basin pond on the northeast or northeast section. That'd be Plan B or C, but we're feeling pretty confident what we're showing here will, will work, but still pretty preliminary.
All right, moving inside. So the parking lot again is right in that area. The old fourth-grade connection used to be right through here, just to try to kind of orient you guys in the plan where we are. And again, the current entry from buses is this. And again, the current entry from buses is this one. We would be reusing that as the bus drop-off as well. So the new main entry will actually be towards the backside of the building. It does meet one of your overarching district goals of the secure entry. So we would have the secure entry vestibule that is immediately connected to the reception area for visitor check-in and sign-in. That would house the majority of the administration offices throughout that. So once you're checked in and you move down this way, we have the space for the large motor room. It's also known as the little gym at the Learning Center right now. Throughout, if you keep moving on down, that's when we start to have our screening, evaluation, and nurse. So this is kind of where a lot of the public will come and visit and their, a lot of times their first interaction with the school district when they bring their three and a half year old in for some screening. And then throughout that, there's a waiting area because a lot of parents will wait. Sometimes you have to wait for your screening, you fill out the paperwork and all of that. So that'll give it kind of a nice lobby space out there. Generally, on the left side, the kind of darker blue, that represents early childhood family education. The lighter blue over here is early childhood special ed. And then Kinder Club is kind of in the tealish blue. And then in the slight mustardy yellow is school readiness. The existing gym will remain, there's currently a divider curtain in that, so that helps with some flexibility of scheduling in some different groups at the same time into that space. And another benefit too is having a couple of the school readiness rooms up by Kinder Club can give those two programs in flexing in and out of a room as well if, if one department needs to accommodate a little bit more growth and the other one doesn't. Any questions on the floor?
One concern about, that was on there, was if they're delivering food to all of these rooms, that you have to kind of go through that reception area to deliver it to the left side or the, what's that, the west side? And they suggested, could you go through, could you make a hallway through that large motor thing? So they wouldn't have to go around and through that area.
Correct. So we are showing that hallway on this version. It's kind of in this lighter yellow right there that connects.
But they still, to go over that way?
Oh, to go this direction.
Yeah, right.
Yep, okay.
Yeah, or is there, are there doors and, I mean, they're gonna be pushing carts, so there's a lot of doors. Are those gonna be open doors all the time?
They can definitely have hardware that is held open, just by pushing it to an ninety-degree angle, then it can be held open. So that can be used as well.
Okay, but just to, yeah, look, so they don't have to go through, around and through that reception area.
Yeah, and I think a lot of that will be explored a little bit more in depth with the, and with the, yep, as we start to learn a little bit about the, the need for seating versus not. So we'll go into more of those details with your food service department.
Does the current kitchen have an opening into that large motor room so you can have, like if you wanted to serve a small lunch area in there we had talked about?
It's not current. I think there's just a doorway opening.
Okay. Because, yeah, the opening was on where the conference room is.
Correct, yep.
I think that would be nice too, just so you have a opportunity to use that as a cafeteria too.
Yep. We'll keep exploring that with Tawny and the District Food Service and see how we land on this new way of serving the students here.
Okay, so you're still working on?
Yep, definitely, yep.
I think there were public comments or questions with regarding to, are there gonna be larger changing table things for older, like a four-year-old? And also they had asked too about having smaller toilets for the kids. Those were public comments that came forward.
And some of those questions were starting to ask at user group levels with Tawny and some of her staff about what do they feel the need is. We've definitely identified areas just for the koala care type convenience station as well as what, within the, more of the educational side, what ones do need the more robust changing table.
Thank you.
Then we have a couple of exterior options. I'll move the red dot. So this is again on the backside of your building, so it's, it's also very much in the corner of the backside. It's all the way back here, so the idea is to widen out your entry in both of these options so that when you're driving around, around here into the driveway, you can kind of get a glance, glance over into that inside corner of the building. So it's widening it out, using different types of metal panel applied in the, kind of some of the shades of gray. And then of course, the Brainerd, the Warrior Blue Tower, accentuating it with a blue canopy. One comment too that we had was, since this is around the backside of the building, is there a way to address some kind of wave finding or identification signage from the frontage roadside? So on the gym side, we kind of just put some title of the building and kind of it's with an arrow that single, singles it's around the corner so that people don't try to use that bus parking lot or that bus entry, because that bus entry would be locked during school hours when the, or when busing is not happening. Another option is kind of using some perforated metal panels in a way that kind of flow a little bit. A little bit to, as, to represent maybe some of the waves of all the Great Lakes around here. Also, it'd be kind of a neat tactile experience for the kiddos to be able to touch and feel as they work, or as they approach the building. Again, same concept of the Brainerd Blue Tower and the canopy. And using that same design concept over around the gym to again, give you the impression that there is an entrance. It's in a, it's just around the corner, so.
Alright. So budget-wise, we are, we are showing over budget right now. We are at the SD, at the SD stage. We feel like we're in striking distance of the budget. We're, we're working at trying to reduce things kind of across, across the board. We're really close, but we are as of right now showing, showing over budget. Schedule, the next, the next approval we'd be looking for is design development. And that'll be towards the end of July, July twenty-ninth. We'd want design development approval. And that would put us at construction documents being done end of October, October twenty-fourth, I think that says. And we'd be looking to, to ward bids mid-December before, before Christmas. And that'll, and that's up for discussion for sure, because we're not intending on, as of right now, we're not intending on starting construction till, till September of two thousand twenty, so. Any questions on Baxter Early Childhood? So then we'll, we'll go to construction expectations. And so safety and security, just kind of give everybody a feel what, what to expect. Back construction areas, we do have fencing, fencing up right now as, as you'll see, and those areas are off limits. We're trying to put a lot of signage around to clearly identify what we, what we have, we have going. We do ask for site visits to be coordinated with, with us, so we can have our site superintendent make sure you have the right prop, you know, PPE on, you know, hard hat, stuff like that and proper clothing. And hard hat, safety vest, covered shoes, long pants, hard to be worn. And then no admittance of public or anyone not involved with the project. So anybody, again, anybody who wants to, to visit the site, we're more than welcome to walk you through it. Just if we could have someone contact us, we'd, we'd really appreciate that. And then during renovation, buildings will be closed to, to the general public. Any, any questions on what I, what I ran through there? Thank you, have a good evening.
Thank you. And thank you, Val, too.
Okay, next up, approval of the minutes for the special school board meeting on the twenty-eighth.
So move.
Thank you.
We have a first from Director Hagelin and a second from Director Nystrom. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And we're gonna postpone the consent calendar until after number seven on our agenda. So we have site reports, communications here. The annual ACOMP report, Eric Jobe.
Hello.
Hello.
Hi, Eric. To do some exciting changes here. Janet showed me what to press, but I don't remember now. Just have to hit presentation mode, I'm sure. Yeah, I do know where the button is. Control. Perfect, thank you very much. I'm Eric Jobe, I'm your ACOMP coordinator. And ACOMP is Brainerd's approved plan of MDEs. Ooh, look at that, the slideshow is moving on without me. MDE's QCOM network. Each year, we are required to make a presentation to the board with our review findings as we do our annual review and work on our continuous improvement model. Over the past more than ten years of participation in ACOMP, in fact, I think we just wrapped up our thirteenth year and are getting ready for year fourteen. We've had some consistent positive feedback from participants. Staff development opportunities, data analysis, the professional learning communities and the focus on student achievement, professional development. And this is also, you know, our, our peer coaching and mentoring support structure that also supports our TDNE required plan. ACOMP program provides a number of things for the district, including over the years, some different professional development opportunities, our BTSS or new teacher trainings, along with the mentorship program that we have, peer coaching, stipends for peer coaches, PLC leaders and stipends for that, curriculum leaders, and trainings. Also, roughly three hundred thousand dollars a year towards district initiatives. Those district initiatives have covered anything from some reading recovery support in the past, AgIT program support in the past, also math integrationists, intervention coordinators for reading. And in the future, we're gonna have a couple of new stipended positions proposed for next year. Also, a number of these items, again, are required by the TDNE statute. For districts who don't participate in QCOM, they find that money through their staff development funds. This helps support a lot of those things that otherwise would cost money from other funds. The program must include five components. Professional development for trainings for coaches, leaders, leadership opportunities, job embedded staff development, which is what we call our PLCs, who are professional learning communities, a teacher appraisal component, which is our peer coaching and mentoring, site level achievement goals, which is a pay-for-performance component, and then also salary enhancement through serving in leadership roles. This year's annual review had a few common themes. Some of them are new to us because of some changes that we've had. And also, some of them are new because of the amount of years we've participated. When you participate in something for a long time, you have to refresh it every so often. So we heard from folks, we need a refresher, the hows and the whys of the program. We also need to look at some stresses that have come by moving some of the PLCs to before and after school, including some bi-weekly PLCs that meet for ninety minutes. And we'll talk some more about that in a moment. Also, some continued training with our common assessments, both formative and, and summative assessments. What to do with the data once we have that data. Also aligning our SMART goals, trying to have the individual goals support our PLC goals, which then support the site goals, which then support the district goal. And lastly, we have included a new collaborative inquiry style of PLC. The classic PLC was written by the Du Force, and it works very well for core content areas, math, science, English. But some of our support structures, special education, counselors, have always found those to be difficult to work with. So we explored a new style, which is collaborative inquiry. Folks want to know some more about that and maybe even expand it a little bit. For example, art is going to be looking at joining. FIED looked at it, they're gonna stay with what they have, but we looked at it. As I mentioned, we, we've had some struggle with some of the before and after school PLCs. One group in particular is a bi-weekly PLC group, an elementary FIED group. They meet for ninety minutes. And a number of those folks are coaches, have been coaches, want to be coaches. It's hard for them to get to practice or have to miss practice. We scheduled those for Wednesday so that they wouldn't miss competitions, but there's still a, a pull. Also, some of our before-school PLCs, for example, DCD. Many, many of the DCD teachers have to help students off the bus in the morning. Even though EA support can be scheduled for that, sometimes EAs are tough to find subs for. So we've just had some growing pains there. As we enter year three, we're not looking at any systemic changes. We are still individually trying to work with the groups to find some answers, but we do have folks who are asking for more flexibility, more opportunities for PLCs somehow beginning earlier than the end of the school day. Or starting, you know, towards the end of the beginning of the school day. We do not have any recommended changes this year to our five core components. The recommended changes fall in that district initiative side of expanding some curricular support at the elementary level in both reading, math, science, and then also support for a special education curriculum staff development specialist, which would work K-12 to help do curriculum alignment for our special education staff, and then also support more special education students in core instruction, which is a district goal that we have. These positions will support the curriculum alignment work and hopefully improve student achievement. The annual report needs to be submitted by, to the school board by June fifteenth, so we made it, it's the tenth. And then what I supplied to you was the full written document of, of the different components, including, you know, this year, site goals, roughly twenty-five percent of our teachers, based on their site, met their site goals. We have a hopeful projection that somewhere between forty and sixty percent could have their site goal next year. The data is still embargoed, we still have to wait for the final numbers for those, but there's some, some good news on the horizon in terms of sites achieving goals. And then, you know, what I will look for from the board is an approval that they receive this, that, then I can let MDE know that we followed through on our part. Do you have any questions for me?
Eric, how many school districts participate in QCOM?
Roughly a hundred school districts and then another seventy charter schools. I think MDE ranks that at about fifty percent of the students in the state. And I know that there are another twenty-plus school districts who would like to get in, but because the funds are frozen in terms of who can apply unless they expand that, there are schools who would like to get in to use those funds.
First, just a comment, I'm, I'm glad to see that you have a collaborative inquiry for those other, because I knew that was always kind of a problem for music teachers or different kinds of art teachers or specialties teachers. So I'm glad that they have something useful to use other than.
Thank you, you know, Tim Murtha brought that to our attention.
Well, thank you, Mr. Murtha. Okay.
Yeah, and, and it does help those teachers find real ways to improve student achievement without feeling like they just have to find support material to do that.
Yeah. And then my other question is, you said you're gonna add, is it two part-time positions or?
Well, it's the expansion of a halftime position to full-time.
Okay.
In, in two situations, and then one is a full-time position.
So basically, two point oh?
Roughly.
Okay, and is that being paid for out of QCOM?
Yep.
There's money in there to?
Yep.
Okay, you didn't have to cut anything else in QCOM to pay?
No, we actually, we have some overage funds that we're, we have a planned spend down for.
Okay, okay.
These were positions that were approved and brought to the board a while ago. What you're looking at is the return of the elementary literacy position to full-time as we train another literacy coach.
Okay.
That position had been historically full-time, so it's just a return to it. Because it's a change of FTE, we have to do it to you. The other one is an expansion of the elementary coordinator for the other content areas to include some grade levels and content material that haven't been covered in the past. If you're looking at Patty Walls and Robin Knutson, they used to do halftime, just one content area. We added the other content areas to them. We added the other content areas to the K-12 position, is the sped position that's full-time. It's in response to our getting dinged last year on the graduation rate for sped. The largest achievement gap in the district.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Very good. And we can reuse these funds for targeted services like that.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you.
Why, again, do we call it Acomp instead of Qcomp?
So Qcomp stands for quality compensation, and this was listed as alternative compensation. Sort of a semantics piece because we know in Brainerd, we are always giving quality and we didn't need a special program to do that. All right, thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Eric.
Okay, we're moving on with our action items. First up is the approval of the annual Acomp report as presented that we just heard.
I'll sum up.
Second.
Okay, we have a first from Director Nelson and a second from Director Nystrom. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Next up, the approval for the final design development for the construction documents and authorize construction manager to solicit bids for Brainerd High School Performing Arts Center. Is there a motion?
I sum up.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a first from Director Campbell and a second from Director Nelson. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, the approval for the final schematic design for Baxter Elementary, no, Baxter Early Childhood, and to move forward to the design development.
So moved.
Thank you. We have a first from Director Nystrom and a second from Director Haglin. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. And then approval of the revised district standards for Blueprint 181 that Brandon presented. Do you have other comments?
No, just that I think this document, as we looked at developing a secondary list of standards in the elementary ones, there were just so many things that were repetitive. But we have really found this to be a useful document, even as far as supporting what our expectations are for safety and security within the district. And so I'm really glad that we've been doing this work. And it really is a document that will continue to update as different projects, the planning and design development are approved. And as the final product is done, we'll keep updating so that we have the current pictures of each of the sites in this document. So I would recommend approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Okay, we have a first from Director Campbell and a second from Director Haglin. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, Alyssa Thompson is going to talk to us about food service. She's the head of our department. First, with the joint agreement with Discovery Woods.
Good evening.
Hi.
Hello. We had a unique opportunity arise this spring. Discovery Woods came to us looking for a joint agreement. We have had a joint agreement with St. Francis now for probably 25 years. So we explored the opportunity. I've met with Discovery Woods, and we think we've come to sort of a mutual agreement about providing meals to them. Kind of what that looks like, we've attached a joint agreement in your packet, is that we would be responsible for day-to-day operations of food service, small wares, free and reduced applications, reimbursement, and the employing and training of a food service employee. They would be in charge of MDH site licensing, the purchase of large equipment. So we're talking ovens, refrigerators, freezers, and then entering the PINS in at their school. It's taking the burden off of vended meals for them and providing much-needed revenue for food service here. I ran some numbers. The federal programs that we would provide at Discovery Woods would be the federal breakfast program, the federal lunch program, kindergarten milk, after-school snack program, snack milk, and non-program remedies. So like catering, box defense, things like that that we do here. Rough estimate of costs, including a high, I did high-end wage with benefits, would be about $90,000. Expected revenue would be 126. So we're looking at $31,000 in the positive if we went with that joint agreement with Discovery Woods. If for some reason we end up with a loss after next year, we can cancel that agreement. So it's a one-year agreement, but I don't foresee any issues moving forward with that.
So it's very similar to what you do with St. Francis?
St. Francis, we actually only do lunch. So this is a much more expanded opportunity for us. And any opportunity I have to provide federal funding with a federal reimbursement is an opportunity that I want to proceed with. Any questions? We would have to hire a 6.5 employee with benefits for that.
A .65, did you say?
6.5 hour employee.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Does our insurance, our liability insurance covers this?
I would have to check on workers' comp would. But other than that, I mean, we don't have any liability in the building. So the way it works is a joint agreement. We just provide day-to-day services and then any work-
We're providing the food, though, right?
Yes, yeah.
So what happens if there was some bad food and meals?
Yep, we're liable for that.
So does our insurance cover that?
Yes.
It does?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. It would basically run like everything else, just in a building that isn't with underneath the umbrella of traditional ISD 181. So we get reimbursement. We do basically all of it. And then they have the, don't have the burden of getting their meals from a restaurant.
That .65, would they do the reimbursement or is that part of your job?
That's part of my job.
Okay.
Yeah.
And you have the bandwidth?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
They do all their own collecting of the payments from the-
They collect the payments. We deposit them. We deposit them.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So you said 6.5 or .65?
6.5 hour employee. So six and a half hours a day.
For five days?
Five days a week, 173 days a year.
Would that employee fall in line with any accrual of?
They're a union employee. They are on a seniority list. It's at every benefit that an employee that we currently have would have.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. You could do a motion at this time?
I'll sum up.
Second.
Okay, we have a first from Director Nystrom and a second from Director Blacklance. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thanks, Alyssa.
Now, Alyssa, you're going to talk to us about the food service moving from family-based accounts to student-based accounts.
Yes.
Beginning July 1st.
Right. So as far as know, for the history of Skyward, we have always been a family-based system in food service, which means if you have one or more kids, you can enter one payment into your family account. We propose moving that to a single payer system, just in food service. This wouldn't affect anything in the student module. So it wouldn't affect any of that stuff. It would just be for Skyward Food Service. And that is because our current base system, if you were to have an address change, say there's a parent, guardian, address, change in household, it does not immediately reflect in food service. So there is a gap. And so what happens is, say, we send out a letter. It may not be to the right person, the right address. They may be a foster kid. There is no sync. If we were to move to single payer, that would immediately sync with what's in the student module. This gives us a much bigger and better handle on how we handle letters and notifications and applications. It's also going to help with reporting, specifically with foster kids, free and reduced applications, homebound and homeless students. They're very hard to track in a family-based system. Other things that we can see an improvement on is snack milk. Currently, we have no electronic system to track our snack milk. If we were to move to a single payer system, we could have an electronic way of tracking that snack milk and also having parents pay for that online. Snack milk currently is the old-fashioned way with cash or check, and clerical have to track that. So it's, we're looking for a better way, a more efficient way of tracking what we're sending out, when we're sending it out, what kids are eating, where they're eating it, and kind of how parents are able to pay. Another thing that's really great about moving to a single payer system is fees for athletics, yearbooks, technology, field trips. They're all going to fall under individual students. So you're no longer going to have five things that you need to pay for, and you don't know who's going on what when. So you can, you can track that. We would also, we are also in the final stages of approving a new credit card processing system. So what we see here, the parents aren't necessarily going to see because it's going to be a one-stop shopping cart experience for them. So they may put $10 here for lunch, and they put $10 for a yearbook or whatever it is, and it'll all go into one cart, and they can pay it at once.
Can they do, can they pay if they have, say, three kids, a lunch program, in the same transaction, they could put 10 into Johnny's and 10 into Sally's?
So let's say you have a kid at the high school, and they eat all a cart. And then you have an elementary student that doesn't eat all a cart. You could put $50 in Johnny's account and $20 in Suzie's account, and they can eat off of that versus-
The parent doesn't have to log into each, okay, good.
You can lump it all together.
So I get notified if my eldest, who's 11, if her lunch account gets low?
Yes.
So then my wife will end up paying to increase hers?
Yes.
She won't have to do that. It'll be just one?
Right. Yep.
Yeah. What about if your, what about if your eight-year-old son goes down to breakfast and doesn't tell us that he's doing breakfast? Just kidding.
Yeah, then you can give us a call. The other thing that we're looking to purchase is something called PCS forms. So currently, right now, we do a lot of different things in our office in terms of sending out letters. We do nightly emails through SkyAlerts. We do nightly emails through SkyWord. We make phone calls. We send weekly and monthly snail mail letters home. And we have no system to track how many times we've done that. So it's all these different pieces that are working individually, and we can't in the office track how many times, when, and where it's gone. So we would like to purchase PCS forms, which is a software program that helps track that. It also lets us set up payment plan options. It also lets us set up unique tiered emails and create letters that we currently can't create in Skyward. That's an initial $4,000 cost, first-time fee, and then a $500 yearly fee. But this is really going to help us track and kind of manage where we're at.
I'm excited for this. I'm excited to tell my wife.
We're very excited.
Just, you know, I'm taking credit for this when we go home.
Yeah, this is really going to, it's going to get us on track to where we need to be so we can sort of address some of those issues about where the letters are going and who's getting them and the stack of mail that comes back.
That's great.
We're really excited about it.
Great. Thank you.
Any more questions? So you wanted to make the motion?
So moved, please.
All right, we have a first from Director Blacklance. Is there a second?
A second.
And a second from Director Nelson. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Now the approval of change from community education-funded snack program to an after-school at-risk food service school snack program at Washington.
Yes. So we have a couple of really exciting changes federally coming to some of our programming this year. The first I would just like to share is that the Lincoln Education Building will move from traditional claims and reimbursement to community eligibility provision, which means that the entire building will receive free breakfast and free lunch with no work on the parent's part. So this is something that you have to qualify for. And since the school is 40% directly certified through the state, they have qualified. And so we are going to provide the students in that building with free breakfast and free lunch. So it's really exciting. That's 100 kids that will be able to eat with no, no effort. It's awesome. So we're really excited about that. Another program, starting in the fall of 2019, is the At-Risk After School Snack Program. So this building here has funded friends' after-school care. And currently, community ed is charging a snack in their enrollment fee. We looked at census data and school data, and we can provide a free snack to all of those children with no cost to the district for moving forward. So that snack will be reimbursed federally. We are asking for a three-hour position for that because that is outside of my current cook manager's hours. The cost of the snack and the wage is able to be funded underneath that reimbursement. So we're asking for permission to post that position.
Any questions? Oh, move. Okay. We have a motion from Director Campbell.
Second.
A second from Director Haglin. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thanks, Alyssa.
Alyssa, before you leave, would you give them a brief update on our summer lunch program? It's so exciting that I know they'd be happy to hear that.
Yeah. So summer lunch is in our fifth year. We currently have 19, 19 sites. They aren't all currently operating at the moment because we do targeted services in June and July and August. But the first day of summer meals, we served 527 meals. And it's gone up every since, every day since. So I don't have a number for you today, but it's been phenomenal. So probably close to a 60 to 75% increase in participation since we started in 2014.
Very good.
So, yeah, we're really excited. It's an awesome program.
It's awesome.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're going to go back to the consent calendar. And the reason we had postponed it is because of these two positions that Alyssa was talking to us about. So is there a motion for the consent calendar?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a first from Director Nystrom and a second from Director Nelson. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Now we'll go back to number eight. And this is, Sarah's going to talk to us a little bit about the CTC fiber lease agreement.
Hello. So a few months ago, Kristy Westbrot came to us with a recommendation or amendment to our original fiber contract that was done in 2004 that we refer to a lot, that really got us on the right track with our network. And just amazing things came out of it for not only district, but our community as a whole. Ms. Westbrot, Westbrot came to us interested in extending that contract by 10 years, that original contract. CTC really feels that it's been a positive thing for everyone, just as we have, and that they wanted to move ahead with that and have us commit to another 10 years. It wasn't up yet. They were just hoping that we could, that we would have agreed to extending that. As we've been looking at it and discussing it as an administrative team, kind of going back and forth on some things, Ms. Westbrot came back to us again, and her and the board would also like to offer some fiber, some extra fiber to us. If you recall during, during my state of technology, we had talked about the fiber lines and blowing fibers into the pipes and all of those good things. CTC is doing two new pipes in the community. They would like to, as part of this deal, give us extra fibers. Really just a win-win for the district. When they had approached us before, our technology team didn't feel like we would need those. CTC and Kristy, or Ms. Westbrot, really feel like they would like to make that part of this plan to enhance it for the district. So.
Sorry.
So, so as part of that, going back and forth, we've been working with our legal team on this as well, and they've been looking at all the verbiage and everything. And as of yesterday, we were to a point where everyone felt comfortable. And then today, they had contacted me about this piece that we had included in the motion. And that is because there's not a date as far as when they will release the fibers to us. Our legal team would like a date on there. What they're proposing are- What they're proposing, our legal team, is that as a board, you go ahead and authorize what's there, but then give Superintendent Larson the authorization to put the finalization once we have that date from the, from CTC on that. So that's what the motion is today.
Sarah, can you also explain the difference between CTC and CSI? Because I know a couple of people have said, is this a typo? And so can you explain that as well?
Yeah, my understanding is CSI is an LLC of CTC, if that makes sense, kind of more business, business verbiage there. But in our original agreement in 2004, it was under CSI. That's how Kevin Larson had signed it, CEO of CSI. When I had reached out to Kristi about that, she did say that CSI is an LLC and they wanted to continue with that in our contract since that was the original, the original company name. So CTC is CSI.
Thank you. Is your motion?
I'll so move the approval.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a first from Director Nystrom, a second from Director Campbell. Any further discussion?
Just a question on the date. Is that the beginning of the tenure? Is that what's still...
No, so the date is, they are starting this project this year and they just didn't have an exact start on that project date.
At least in the fibers.
Correct. Correct. And so that's the date that we're referring to. They didn't have a project date at this time for us.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Next up, the first reading of MSBA policy 615. Mr. Murtha. Am I going to have to move you too?
There's a bird looking in.
There's a bird in paradise out there.
A what?
A bird sitting there looking in.
Oh, you're kidding.
In the hallway, sitting on the ground.
He was in the gym earlier this afternoon.
Gets around.
I'm stepping in for Heidi, Assistant Superintendent Han. This falls closer to her world than I am, but she was unable to be here this evening. The purpose of policy 615 is to clarify the conversations that IEP teams are supposed to have regarding MTEST testing and ELL support during testing. It is a replacement policy that currently already exists. You see some significant removal of the purpose of the policy. All that can be summed up with the idea that the IEP team is responsible for having a deeper and documented conversation about the recommendation for accommodations for MCA testing. If the MCA test is appropriately used as an MTEST test, which means that you're looking at probably a student with some fairly significant cognitive and developmental delays, up to 1% of your population is eligible for that, you need to identify those elements in the IEP. For students with limited English proficiency, what's important there is again to identify that in the IEP that makes it easier to document and then make the case for accommodated services during the MCA. So there's a lot of red ink on that form, but that's really what it boils down to, those two things.
Are there any questions? Okay. And this is a brand-new policy, so it'll need three readings, correct?
Well...
This is just the first reading?
The, there's an existing MSBA policy that has been recommended in the past. I don't know if we actually had it or not. I, I'm sorry, I did not look up the policy history because what we have is a redlined version of an existing set of language. It changes policy purpose. So at some point, somewhere, this policy existed even if Brainerd did not have it.
Okay, we have a first from Director Haglund and a second from Director Nystrom. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Very much. Approval of the contract ratification for 2017-2019 principal contract. Jenny.
Hi, good evening. So tonight you have before you for your consideration the 2017-19 principal contract. Not a lot of changes were made other than the salary for this particular round and then we have come to a tentative agreement for 2019 to 2021. And we'll be bringing that before you next board meeting likely. Do you have any questions?
Okay. Is there a motion?
Second.
We have a first from Director Campbell, a second from Director Nystrom. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jenny.
Next up, the approval of the contract ratification for Superintendent Larson for school years 2019 through 2022. Have to stay. Let's see if it gets approved. I'm sure it will. We're just so glad to have you here. I mean, you're my fourth superintendent and I've only been here for six years, so yay, you stayed for three. I know Director Nystrom has a statement to read.
First of all, I'd like to say, this is sort of a rare night because it's been eight years since the last ratification of a renewal for a superintendent. That was Superintendent Rizidlo in 2011. Four months ago, the board tasked me with negotiating a new three-year contract with Superintendent Larson. I've worked diligently with Superintendent Larson, Human Resources Director Jenny Castle, and Business Manager Marcy Lord. What you have in front of you is the culmination of that effort. When we looked to hire a new superintendent in the spring of 2016, we had a tall order in front of us. The stated task is with taking a look at long-term facilities management. We had hired the Cunningham Group to look at our facilities. In 2014, that report came back and the recommendation was to research and come up with a plan to have a comprehensive facilities upgrade plan that would be addressed with a bond referendum. The hiring of Superintendent Larson took place and she began her new job with the Brainerd School District on July 1, 2016. In my opinion, she is everything we were looking for and so much more. Number one, she took over a school district that needed to be put back on course after having such long and steady leadership from the likes of Elliot Woolery, Bob Gross, Jerry Walseth, and Steve Rizidlo. We've had a couple of years of setback before she came. Lane came in and provided strong leadership, willing to make tough decisions, including stabilizing our budget and spending. Two, she led a very successful bond referendum. At $205 million, by far the most successful referendum in the 147-year history of the Brainerd School District. Three, she's a real people person, always putting the needs of constituents before her own. She's always available to the needs of our district. She attends many athletic, arts, and district activities after school, many nights not returning home until after nine o'clock. But this is a person who has the innate ability to communicate with anyone, students, parents, community members. It doesn't matter who it is, she wants to understand the concerns of our constituents no matter how difficult that may be. And I'm just talking about the first three years. Today, we're asking her to be the face of the school district, to be the district point person for our building project, and to be in charge of an organization that has close to 1,000 employees and 6,500 students. She doesn't complain, she does her job, and she always has a smile on her face. When the final negotiations took place, she wanted a contract that would be fair and reward her for her hard work, but also to be fair to the district and our financial constraints. She's hardworking, compassionate about her job, cares for the people she works with. And if you haven't noticed, she never gives up on anything, never, ever. I'm pleased to bring you a contract ratified tonight. It is for three years and would be from July 1, 2019 to June 30, 2022. It calls for a 3% increase in year one, 2% in year two, and 2% in year three. The higher increase in year one is to account for Superintendent Larson going to a higher deductible health insurance plan with a greater out-of-pocket expense for her. I hereby present this contract for ratification by the board and to recognize the outstanding job that Superintendent Larson has done in her first three years with the district. Thank you.
Very good. Did you want to make a motion with that or was that it?
Yeah, I should do that, shouldn't I? I will make a motion that we renew Superintendent Larson's contract for the next three years with what you have seen on Board Book.
And I will happily second that.
Thank you. So we have a first from Director Nystrom, a second from Director Campbell. Any further discussion? I would just like to add, I don't have any prepared words, which is... But I'm humbled and I thank you very much for those kind words. The last three years have been incredible. This was just a, this was exactly the move that my husband Warren and I were looking for and to be with our newer children and to be able to work in a district like Brainerd. I, I talk all the time about how, you know, I just thought that it was just so amazing to be given the honor to serve on behalf of this incredible district and to actually be here. I still have to pinch myself sometimes that I get to be part of this. But I'm only one small, small part of this incredible opportunity that's happened. We have a phenomenal board. I've worked for 13 years with incredible boards and this is just an incredible board that does their work, that is very, very supportive of the education. And I thank each of you for the work that you do because I think it's like anything, you, you don't really understand the amount of time and energy that goes into something until you do it. I thank you for that. We have the most incredible employees. I look out into the audience and I think about all the activities that have happened this past school year, the work that's been done by our teachers, by all the paraprofessionals, our cooks, our, our building and grounds people that have made this a reality. I look at our consultants who have come on board to be partners in this process and I, and this community that has supported us so greatly, our business partnerships, the, the stakeholders throughout the community that, that give their hearts and souls to our district every day, and most of all, our incredible children. You know, I think about the, how at the beginning of every meeting, we get to recognize our kids and our staff for the outstanding work and I feel blessed to work as a very small part of the most incredible team. And I tell people all the time, we're the right team at the right time and together we will continue to move forward and if approved, I am honored to serve on behalf of this incredible district for the next three years. Thank you. We're blessed to have you. So very blessed. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries unanimously. You're in. Thank you. Next up, the approval to move the regular school board meeting from June 24, 2019 at 6:00 p.m. to the special school board meeting on June 26 at 4:30. That is a Wednesday. So make note of that, June 26, 4:30, a Wednesday. And Janet, did double-check, I know some board members had asked that if we change the date and time and so on, it is a special meeting. So every, we will not be able to have an addendum for this meeting. No additions. Right, no additions. No amendments. Correct. Okay. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a first from Director Nelson, a second from Director Nystrom. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Next up, the approval to move the regular school board meeting from July 8 to a special school board meeting on July 15 at 6:00 p.m.
So moved. Second.
All right, we have a first from Director Haglund, a second from Director Campbell. Discussion?
It's the only meeting in July.
At, at this point, it is the only meeting in July and so I know Justin, I believe it was you, that talked about the second meeting in July. So if we have to have that, we'll have to talk about that later, but at this point there's only one July meeting.
But that would be a special meeting then?
It'd be a special board meeting, yep. All righty. Girl. There's, that bird is in...
We have a bird in, in the room.
Would you be willing to...
Earl's going to get it.
What are you going to do, Earl?
He's sitting there for a while. He's watching.
It's right on the...
Oh, there it is, yeah.
No, these don't open.
Think you need a net.
Wow. Oh, word.
Yeah.
Come around.
I thought it was a person in costume or something. Oh, my word. Okay, we have a motion on the floor. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Okay, informational time. Brainerd Public Schools Foundation Report. Director Campbell.
Did not meet, they're on break for a couple of months.
Sweet, okay. Curriculum report. Mr. Murtha, did you have anything to add?
Nothing at this time, yes.
All right, thank you. Business Services Report. Marcy Lord.
Good evening. I just had an update. I did go to the MasBowl Legislative Update and everything that Lane had said is accurate. The one thing I wanted to add was there is a Safe Schools, we could get some additional funding contingent on the general fund closing balance of the state. So if it is greater than $63 million, there'll be $30 million appropriated. And if it is between 33 to 63 million, whatever's greater than 33 million will be appropriated to the schools. So fingers crossed.
Grants this year.
Yes. Oh, so we won't have to do that application? No. Okay. It just goes into our Safe Schools money, so that would be awesome. Okay. And then just wanted to tack on to what Alyssa had talked about, that going from the family to the single, the next board meeting will have a contract for a credit card company to manage all that so that you can log in and make that payment with all the students. And enrollment report, there was not anything in your packet. You will see a final report when we have the final ADM. So the head counts are over and now we're going to start the submission process and hopefully get final numbers on ADMs. And then 1920 budget will also be at the next board meeting as well being presented. So we've worked on it and now it's time to present the whole budget document.
Did you pay our bills this month?
Yes, we did.
All right, that sounds good.
They are in there.
Thank you.
Is there any questions? Thank you.
All right, thanks. Superintendent's Report. Great, I will keep mine relatively short as well. As Marcy just talked about, we've been hearing a lot from our organizations about what happened at the legislative session and such. So I think the meeting that I went to last week was just a really nice synopsis of everything and so one of the things I have in my notes is to send our legislators a thank you card for really putting K-12 education, fighting for us this year again. Also, last Friday, we had a Republican Education Co-op Board of Delegates meeting and we got some really interesting statistics about the increase of special education in our region. And I asked them at that time because the information was so interesting that if they would come and actually report to the board either at the end of the summer or in early fall. But just as a for instance, from 2012 to 2018, our special education numbers rose by 33.72% overall. However, when you break it down in the area of autism spectrum disorder over the course of those six years, we've had 142.39% increase. And all of the schools have seen just a significant increase in that particular area. But they're going to come and talk about all of the areas with the board and give you an update of, of how it breaks down. And I found it very interesting and I, and I knew you would too, so they're going to go to all of the boards and do that. The last thing that I have to say today is last Monday, really... To be able to have an update on the building project and be able to talk to our teachers and to give an update of where we were at and to do the safety piece that Brandon talked about, be able to, Brandon did just a really nice job of presenting to everyone and introducing all of the members of our team to staff so that they knew who were the people that were going to be around all their buildings. Following that, all I heard were raving reviews again about Dr. Anton Truer. He came back for a second time to the school district to talk about the education of Native American students in our school and in our region. And I think what was so beautiful about his presentation is, he just does it in such a nice way that if we aren't doing everything exactly correctly, it's not like you lay blame, it's like, how can we get better? And how can we work together as a, as a state and a region to, to meet the equity that we want for all children? And so I just wanted to thank the board for allowing him to come back, because all I heard were raving reviews from our employees regarding that. So that's my report.
Thank you. Future board meetings and committee meetings. June 12, we have the Principal Academy Presentation at Sourcewill at 8:30 to 3:00. June 13, Katie Pelkel's gonna do the strategic planning with Superintendent Larson. June 24, Professional Development at Sourcewill at Grandview through the 26. And then on June 26, our special school board meeting, which is a Wednesday at 4:30. June 27, Project Oversight at 8:00 a.m. July 4, the district offices are closed. And July 15, our special school board meeting at 6:00 p.m., which we just approved. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
First from Nystrom, second from Haglund. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And we are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.